Dear Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for the blessings of day. As we go into this meeting tonight, I pray, Father, that you help us to have wisdom and understanding of the situations that we are faced with. In Jesus' name we come and pray, amen.
Do you even like, please?
My pleasure, please.
To the flag, at the United States of America, and to the Republic where which is stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Dwyane Smith.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kingston. John Ciprincher.
Here.
Samantha Trenton.
Here.
Suzanne Swinney.
Here. Uh, first is approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Motion to approve, unapproved.
Second.
Motion by John Oates, second by Samantha in discussion. Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans. John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Suzanne Swinney.
Yes. Next is approval approval of reports of office.
Motion to approve.
Motion by John Oates, second by Samantha in discussion. Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans. John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Suzanne Swinney.
Yes. Next is approval of notaries. We got four. Got Ramona Price. She works for Mr. Brandman. Jennifer Wooten. She works for Best Buy Metals. Beatty Standish works for First Enterprise Real Estate. Jalen Rogers. She works for Jeff Johnson State Car and Vegas Insurance.
Motion to approve all four.
Motion by John, second by Samantha in discussion. Any discussion on others? Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Suzanne Swinney.
Yes. We're gonna change around number four and five because number four is budget amendments. And some of the budget amendments depend on where number five passes, so we're gonna swap those two. So we'll go on to number five, which is Amber Service Contract. Mission here.
Commissioner Brooks, would you read this resolution on this?
Yeah, can you read your resolution?
I got one. Okay. Can you give me a quick background on this? This is primarily the recognition of county members from you. Some of the people from here that are hearing that, if any questions. This would take be part of three months of this fiscal year, with a total of seventeen months. That puts it right at renegotiation after already been done. For eight whole families, which was option one, which was allowed in the original motion. At the, uh, to go into the contract with CareMed.
Uh, and you did talk to C T A S?
I did talk to C T A S. They sent me some data. I did not get to see it, but she seemed to think that everything was fine as long as it stayed within what was offered in the original bids. In other words, when the R F E's went out, we had, uh, do you have a copy of that quick sheet with Brooks?
No.
You got it, yes. The, uh, closest was a million something for option one, where CareMed was nine hundred thousand. We went with the seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar option, which I believe was option three, known as the Brooks Option.
I don't remember that.
I think it said, let's see what it is for seven twenty. Oh, that was that option. That's the one we went with.
I bet you I am.
It's on the quick sheet, the Brooks, the Brooks Option. Which it turned out to work because that is the one we went with. But it went, that was two twelves, two point fours, and a Q R V. And this will take sub to four A L S's. With a difference of a hundred and eighty thousand in a twelve month cycle.
And just to get this out there, uh, everybody knows how tight money is. Everybody knows what's, I mean, every county's struggling. This is just to get us back to where we've always been. It's nothing additional, nothing needed, nothing, you know, that we don't need. It's just maintaining, uh, what the counties always had as far as service takes us back. I guess to say grounds, you know?
Takes us back twenty nine.
It just, yeah, takes us back. Before that. Do you want to read your resolution?
Yes, sir.
Three, one, twenty-two. Resolution, the governing body of Pope County, Tennessee, modifying Amber Service. Whereas the governing body of Pope County, Tennessee, has identified a need for additional Amber Service availability in and through the county for more comprehensive coverage of those who may for me. Whereas legislative body also understand there's no perfect number of Amors for each town, day of the year, but adding additional Amors will greatly reduce the occurrences of level zero. Which means no Amors labeled nor earned in the county. Through the districts of Pope County. And where, whereas it is of best interest Pope County to supply medical help and assistance to its citizens, now therefore be resolved by Pope County Commission making regular session at seventeenth day of March, twenty twenty-two. That's what it says, the body gives notice provided in section four-eight of current contract, CareMed EMS Tennessee LLC. To modify Amor's availability and staffing to four A L S Amors for option one of original bid proposal, CareMed, with the modification being for a period of seventeen months. At which time the county and CareMed can review and make changes that are within the criteria of original bids and conditions of renewal. Furthermore, the payment increase provided will be reflected according to the original bid price for option one. And start on completion and modified service implementation and only for times that reflected by the modification agreement.
I'll make the motion to approve. Resolution three, one, twenty-two.
Second. Got a motion by John Oates, second by Morris. Any more discussion?
I have some questions for CareMed. The only reason we really even went to three was because of analysis by A M R saying it could be done. Are y'all gonna keep up statistics during this next seventeen months to show whether it was really needed or not? To show where the need was, specific in the county, whether it's east side, west side, north side, or south side?
I did look up at what we were discussing the other day, uh, in the committee meeting with the business of Austin calls that we had. Fifteen of them were in Coker Hill, Duck Town, Over Town. Uh, twelve of them were on this end of the county.
Presumably.
There were three more up above and down here. And I guess we'll be glad if you vote for status.
I had one question asked me the other day. I know we're in favor of four answers, but as y'all's cut off points, sort of like the county deputies, the west side covers, they're thinking the takeout west, and the east side covers, the takeout east? Is it like y'all?
Generally, what we do is, is both units are out. If we have four trucks, if both units are out on either side, then we pull one from the other side to the takeout to cut. That way, if another call was to generate on that side of the county, response time would be cut down from, don't have to come all the way from that other side. We look over that, so.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to include this, just on the off chance of, uh, of any, any issue with the switch in between the options. This is the original motion that CareMed contract. And it was, uh, regular meeting, September seventeenth to twenty twenty. But just because that resolution refers back to the original motion. Commissioner Escalante made a motion to approve option three. That's the Brooks motion, by the way, just so you know. Option three with CareMed, uh, with a four-year contract with the option of going back to option one immediately in the future. Commissioner Pivenger said that the motion should first attract a master roll call vote, and it has the vote count. But that was put in the original motion. It was there.
Does want C T A S opinion of what?
In a nutshell, yes, it was part of the original bid process when the contract was. And it's also referred to, this motion referred to back into the contract, this resolution. It stated as such, we go to these four answers on six, six day notice. Which would mean that y'all have sixty days if this passes to staff and supply your Amors. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any more discussion?
This is coming out of our money.
Yes. Will I please, please, uh, pass?
It was two pending budget amendments, that's correct.
Correct. Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans. John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Suzanne Swinney.
Yes. Now, we'll do the budget amendments. We've got, I'll do these ones first, then we'll hang them. The old first, you don't care. I got six, you care, do yours, Sam, you wanna do?
I'll do that one bit.
I'll do the, uh, see, we got one here from. Forty-five thousand, Road Department credit.
If you look at the back page, the Road Department's got the one that's saved together. So if you look at the back page, it's amendment number six twenty-one. That's the one that was presented in February at Duck Town. The only thing that needed corrected on that, on the audit, on the sixty-six thousand, five eleven, that's vehicle and equipment insurance, a hundred dollars. It should have actually been sixty-five thousand, five eleven. So the sixty-six thousand was the incorrect number there, and then sixty-six thousand, seven oh seven, building improvement, it should have been sixty-eight thousand, seven oh seven. So if you look at the first page, that's the only thing that's changed, is those first group of numbers, sixty-five thousand and sixty-eight thousand, still being pulled from the liability insurance, and it's still equaling eleven hundred dollars.
What was this resolution number from, from the change of?
No resolution number. It's amendment number seven dash twenty-one.
Seven twenty-one, the last one's six twenty-one. Okay, so this does refer back to you to just correct?
And in the bottom, at the bottom of seven twenty-one, it does say budget amendment six dash twenty-one had expenditure loan sixty-five, or sixty-six thousand, five eleven, which should have been sixty-five thousand, five eleven, and sixty-six thousand, seven oh seven. It should have been sixty-eight thousand, seven oh seven. It was just a pop, oh, error, error.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendments from seven twenty-one. Motion by James, second by Deary. Any more discussion? Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Suzanne Swinney.
Yes. Now, we have three together here, one oh one, and then, should I do them three together plus the two for the Amber Service, other one oh one, or three?
One of the Amber Services is a one oh one account. The other one has to be done prior to it, one twenty-eight. Another left corner has to be done with one oh one.
All right, so we'll start at one twenty-eight.
Yes.
Motion to approve. Motion, that's why I like the, motion by Deary, second by Samantha. Any discussion on one twenty-eight? Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Yes. Now, we need to, uh, proceed to the other five, I guess. Well, I think they're all good, man. Well, we do the, they're all one oh one now. The one that's out there is all out of fund, one oh one. One of them is an amount of forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the source funds is a donation transfer, uh, pro spend to here, the Amber Service, amount's forty-five thousand. The other one is, uh, we have two different for Amber Service.
What number's the one twenty-eight, by the way?
So it's two talking. Uh, next one is from, uh, Melissa Jenkins in the Corps of Clerk's office. Moving line up from one oh one, fifty-three, one hundred, for the frame, for one thousand. One oh one, fifty-three, one hundred, for furniture, five hundred. The total amount's fifteen hundred. She's wrote the reason down here, because COVID scare, extra jurors called in. To them panel jurors for twenty twenty-two jury trials backed up because of COVID. All scheduled in twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve one oh one budget amendments.
Uh, we got one more.
There's twenty, number twenty-seven, thirty.
We got these three out here, did it. Or four.
I thought it was three, was it?
It's going backwards, that was the last.
Well, I thought you gave me on Amor's, did you?
Okay.
I got two of the same budget amendments, forty-five thousand, I thought they took the one, it's actually one piece paper. So we got three left, the one oh one. One of them's from amount of five thousand, proposed source funds, direct appropriation grant. It's going in to the county building and fire slash maintenance, five thousand. The next one is from undead designated fund amount, an amount of thirty-six thousand, two eighty-seven, twenty-two. It's gonna be expanding on county building and contract services. And the last one is a direct appropriation grant for amount of twenty-five hundred, it's going into county building, maintenance repair.
Is the amount of the grant on the kill bond gonna be coming out of the one-time use funds?
No, it's just coming out of fund balance for now. We'll get reimbursed for the bulk of that from that grant that we have for twenty-five thousand.
So we have to go down there for seven to eleven thousand on top of that.
We'll cover all one.
It's a reimbursement grant, so we have to pay it out first, and then I'll send in to get the money back.
I'll make a motion to approve budget amendments. Thirty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Forty, forty-seven to thirty-one.
Four, okay. Twenty-seven to thirty-one.
Got a motion by James to approve budget amendments, twenty-seven to thirty-one, second by Deary. Any more discussion?
Yeah, on the, on the far hall there, what is that, uh?
It's just gonna make appropriations, hoping to get a, a metal, one metal door bought. And bring that in, walk through the. Uh, it's red gravel, I wish to try.
Okay, we use them.
Yeah.
On deco cars, get that door?
Yep, and then we just a little bit have it installed, and then, uh, we're gonna see how many loads of gravel we can put in that part one, and get it leveled up.
Okay, on the, uh, number twenty-seven, it says a grant, appropriated grant. What grant did that come out of?
That's about one-time money, is what it's called. That three hundred and twenty-seven thousand we got that we keep forward.
The governor's.
Just about one-time, not, hasn't been spent on one-time, not recovered.
Any more discussion? Rock call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dwyane Smith.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
John Ciprincher.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
Yes. John Oates, you filled in the full under six?
Yeah.
Full by Commissioner Piver, uh, on move number seven, which is also Commissioner Piver's private purchase law.
Private purchase law, give you update on that. That's what I'll have to do right now. It's actually a private act, it's seven act, purchasing law. Talked to Cinder Bell, been right out a year ago. Several things happened. He decided not to run again, but he is willing to introduce a private act. Have talked to, uh, Mr. Bryant with, uh, local hotting, who's, uh, one of the supervisors there, and William Wood. Also have talked to C T A S representative, Ms. Duncan, going to go right, a private act. Along with the legal warning from Mr. Bryant and Mr. Wood, model line is it would work the way it is right now with the road department in the county. It would be a private act that exempted, and the rights would come to the road department, go to the road department, not on the Director of Council budgets. Our Director of Council budgets would be clear of the road department, the road department be clear of us, and the recurring binding would disappear. Waiting on a couple calls back, also legal working, it's supposed to be a little bit stuck in this month. Should have a private act here for next month, if y'all are interested. It's a lot of work to do, if nobody's interested.
But it's worth it, keep getting that reoccurring.
The thing on that reoccurring, and the trace is here, and you've seen it every year, it was here before you.
Uh, I got it, yeah.
It's been a year since, it's been a year since Kelly and Rachel and.
I think we're in thirteenth year. And the thing about it was, and the only reason I talked to Cinder Bell here about a year ago, was because they, they kinda started getting serious about it.
Well, the only reason, I mean, it's, it's up to commissions to go with it, but the problem is money. And, uh, we were told, what, five years ago? By a former C T A S representative, that we had to do that, okay? And it's gonna be a expense of about three hundred thousand a year, to say to do it. And that's gonna be reoccurring, three hundred thousand additional money every year. So we find, yeah, so we found out that we couldn't, you know, keep doing it until we got something resolved, like Mr. Bell. And even though it's an audit finding, I think we made a good financial choice. I mean, that's a million, five hundred thousand we saved in Kansas in five years by not, uh, you know, doing, looking for, getting creative about it, guess what we done? But, yeah, it's gonna be, what was John Oates, additional, three hundred thousand a year?
I don't, I, I remember, I remember it dealt with, but you had to hire new employees to go with the Director of Council weapons office, and they won't work on her because of the increased salary step that the state recommends when it fully comes in. And then you had multiple problems like paying equipment, software, providing, it right out of the road department, that's paid for, out of their funds. Their funds will stay with them, then we had to find the funding to, to take over the operation.
Good example is, uh, the school director of council budgets would have been brought in to the county, uh, and she would have worked under the county director of council budgets. Okay, then, the money would have been given to schools to find that position. They would have to voluntarily give it back to us.
Because it becomes part of the maintenance.
Because it's maintenance fair, and which they probably wouldn't have, you know? So we'd have to, you know, not only would we not got that back, we'd have to have new funding to hire the new, you know, the new positions. But it's about three hundred thousand a year, and that's been five years now, now that adds up quick, you know, that's a million and a half dollars already. Well, there's no doubt about it, it went on the tax rate, because we ain't gonna know where else to get from. And I think this is our way around it, what he's.
If everybody will do what they said, and, and, and I have talked about the conversation with, uh, Bryant directly, we got a few emails back forth. If it was to go, then clean and they'll allow it. Not saying that the, uh, Corps of Clerk's office is necessarily just thrilled about it, but, you know, I don't think it's gonna be how it is this. If it goes through, then things stay as is without the, uh, binding. So, I mean, until I hear different, I'm just gonna keep going. Hopefully, be here next month.
Y'all put it back on the gin and things.
Let me see how far along we are, and that way.
Say it on that, for now, John Oates.
Do what?
That is for now, man.
Yes, sir.
Uh, moving on to number eight, we got a resolution for litter grant, I saw from Commissioner Piver.
That, uh, can be done, actually, depending on the approval on the truck that's being presented from R M P, dealing with the litter grant. I done a little check, and we don't have to do what they're wanting in the resolution, by resolution, or the, or the motion. And that was to make sure that the truck was, uh, deemed if we approved it. County general property designated for use of the litter grant, and not to be confused with some purchased out litter grant funds, or they could not be used as in kind against the matching funds out there. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple. Go ahead, go ahead, go all approvals, because, I mean, you know, until we get the truck, which no sense.
See if this one might, see if this.
Boy, it should be took care of in the home-built truck, only really.
All right, we'll go back here, with President, uh. Next is also from Commissioner Piver addressing the county fair.
Yeah. I have my notes on that. There's your notes on it, I think you got it. Okay, county fair. Are we having a county fair? It does not look like. Don't shoot the messenger. Can't get him in flight. Well, I talked to Ms. Stafford, who is president of the County Fair Association. She did talk to me mid-what evening, somewhere around January, they had already booked up. She said she wasn't sure on the status, I was gonna get a show barn. Uh, asked to whether it will be available or not, it should be available for fair time, but, uh, she was under the understanding that they take control of that in Great Paxton, like, with soil and water conservation. She had me talking to Mr. Don Lefter, who said one acre was given to F F A and four H, in the mid-teens. Uh, I checked with, is Ms. Candy still here? Yeah, I'm glad you're still there.
She's here behind it, man.
I did check, I did check with the Restaurant Department's office. Do you remember when I come in on this?
We think the land is Pope County's and the building, what's the F F A, was a building, didn't they hear it to the four H, but the land is still Pope County's.
Okay, so the land.
Kind of like the.
Not necessarily the improvement, but the land is Pope County's, that's great. We're assuming from the letter that went from Board Fire, so I got to talk to him, uh, for just a second on this, that there was a letter sent to Joyce Miss Stafford. And that, uh, the control of the building itself was given to, uh, Paxton and, and the, I guess, soil and water conservation or anything, whichever portions. It's there. I talked to, got a call into the State Fair Association, uh, have not got a response back. But I do have a list of members that are supposed to be on our County Fair Association, if y'all. But I do have a list of members that are supposed to be on our County Fair Association, if y'all, one of my, send them, I'm going to read them off real quick, from what I understand from Ms. Stafford. The fair committee is Gina Thompson, Jenny Dixon, Kevin Gumpford, Carrie Stafford, Loretta Rumble, and the secretary appears to be Nicole Thompson.
Dakota.
Yeah, it's not right.
That's not? Who is the secretary?
Dakota was.
Well, now she told me Dakota.
Dakota Thompson.
Okay, Dakota Thompson, all right. Uh. So, the full midway, and there are a list of carnal force, county groups at the state. I left a message to them just to see if they happen to be in the opens this year, I don't got a response back.
I think there's a good possibility, will be, I mean, with COVID, still, in some cities, been issues.
The ten years that I was in it, the, I mean, and I, I know, the COVID has done some changing. If you didn't look at fine immediately after the fire, you didn't get it. One reason being with us, like it is with everything else, because we weren't a big money macrophobe. So, they didn't jump on any kind of bandwagons for us. So, lots of times, I mean, it usually, every year that they were booked, you know, like, they'd go up, they'd go up, they'd go up. And Joyce would just keep letting them do it because you couldn't get them. So, you know, and, and like you say, now COVID, uh, you would think that maybe could have played us a little bit.
Well, talk about some big cities, something like Oklahoma or something, I'm just saying like Jim Carrey said. It might be a change.
Right, right.
It don't hurt to change.
Yeah. No, it's, you know, it doesn't, it don't hurt, it's just like I say, it's not real probable, but, you know, but could have been. But anyway, I guess till that happens, you don't.
What's next?
John Hope, is that it on the fair?
Yeah, that's all I had.
Like we said. Next is, uh, I've got that on there, uh, the one that pay what for a month, please? John Hope, friend, I told you we got the resolution, roll.
No, I got road brooks, it's in queue, remember the little circle that says in queue?
Either way, we got to pay. Uh, number eleven is B is for litter trip, and Z is for hat.
How was that that bid open, there's only one that, uh, can turn the bid in?
I just have questions on it, because when I Kelly Wood looked at them, it's way over cost. I missed the call back today, I got busy at work, to see how much they would actually like loan someone else for that, if it's not valued right.
How much do we pay the total?
Uh, trading, it goes from eighteen hundred to four thousand, a middle of three thousand. Profit, uh, goes from thirty-three hundred to about sixty-eight hundred with a middle of five thousand. And that's in like excellent shape, not with all this work done to it. I've got a call.
Yeah, I'd like emotionally reject this bid.
I didn't Kelly Wood look it, but I did look at comparable prices on Facebook and Craigslist, and I couldn't find anything remotely close to.
That's a pretty good price, huh?
Yeah, everything's outrageous right now. Everything I found was priced at ninety-five hundred, thirteen thousand, and that's for stuff, the thirteen thousand had three hundred and forty thousand miles on it.
Well, it's just got a hundred and seventy-six thousand miles, and it's had, uh, new axles put in it, front suspension's been redone in it, we don't even know who rebuilt it. Um, for eighty-two hundred dollars, that's a lot of money. I mean, for a truck that's not even valued at that. If you was to go to the bank and try to, um, borrow money for it, they're not going to give you that, no. Especially when, I mean, with that, I'm just saying.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, you know, we're, we're college people, we got about fifteen of them, and, uh, that's, that's the only thing about it, you can't find things. That, that's the truth, you can't find them. Five-speed with Cummins, with that kind of mileage. Now, all this work, like Samantha says, that has been done to it, I don't know whether that has been done to it just to make it better? Or if it was having big issues, and all this work was done to it to fix issues. I mean, we, we've got them with three hundred thousand miles on them that I can never have none of this, you know? But, that don't, I don't know, because I don't, didn't, I've never owned a truck. So, I don't know whether, uh, it was just done to make it better, whether it needed it or not, which could have been the case. It never hurts to put new stuff on them, that's for sure. We, we run stuff to pots of hard, so, you know, like, you can't go on this on that, so.
Was you going, will you go with some kind of training or something for a month or two before you can use this truck? Like, uh, take inmates out with you or?
Uh, well, can you tell me that question again?
The truck, was it going to be a month or two before you was actually going to start using it? What, you going to have to go some kind of training or something?
Uh, I've already been to the training in the Sheriff's Department where inmates take out inmates out, over a year ago, so, uh, I need that truck. I'm working out of my car, and I'm paying, I paid over three thousand dollars just in upkeep on my car, and I can only put two or three bags of trash in there. And when we picked up fifty-two bags with T V A, you know, I spent more money going back and forth in mileage than I did, um, you know, just, you know, getting the trash picked up and stuff like that. Whereas if I had a truck, then I can just put the trash inside of it. I also have money in my budget to be able to, you know, do oil changes and all that kind of stuff, and because I have a private car, you know, I'm paying four dollars and something cents a gallon for gas. And only getting forty-seven cents a mile, so I'm actually losing money driving my own vehicle. So, I'm in desperate need of this vehicle, or a vehicle.
Have you drove this truck, will?
No, ma'am, I haven't.
I went by looking at the truck.
Did you mark, what do you think about it?
Riverside repair done the work on it.
Do what now?
Riverside repair done the work on it. The only thing that I know that is wrong with the truck, the heater don't blow hot, hot.
Yeah.
And the dash is broke like all dotters.
Like all dotters, right.
It's a straight truck, downgate's gone. Other than that?
You heard it, you heard it run? Well, like I say, it is hard to go on a book value for these trucks, because they are not outsized. They're just, you can't find them, you know? We've been, we've been offered, we've got one that we've been offered every, everything from fifteen thousand to twenty-two thousand far. Just, do you want to sell it? Do you want to sell it? Do you want to sell it, you know, so? I mean, so it's, it's hard to put a value, this is not like a Camaro or a Grand Duke Cherokee or something like that, where there's nine thousand of them every so many feet, you know? They are hard to find.
If you're wanting the truck, I believe it would be a good truck.
Yeah, my, my problem is that when I'm working out of my car, I have no lights on it or anything, and when I get these groups together, like I have been doing to be able to clean up their neighborhoods and stuff. I have, you know, it's extremely dangerous, because I can only use my signs and stand out in front of, in the road, you know, trying to get everybody to slow down a little bit as these groups pick up trash. So, um, we've, I've put a light bar on it and all that kind of stuff, and I do have money to actually fix the truck if, if it has a problem too, so.
Yeah. That would come out of your budget if it had like some model repairs and things that needed to be done?
Yes, ma'am, I have, I have that, uh, as far as like sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars a year, or per grant, to be able to do something like that. And, you know, instead of paying four dollars a gas, and then I can use it, if it's a county vehicle, I can use the gas that's there at the, you know, pressure, county gas, I already have a key for that, so.
Tire is good on two.
It's got good tires on.
I think it would be definitely an asset, so.
Are we going to vote on them? Well, we got a motion and second, first, but rejected, be. Green discussed on reject on the beat. Who else is up there?
It was a gentle, it's a pretty good gentle, Arielle, thank you for being good.
How far are the bids going on?
Like the rest of the newspaper. I would say, I don't know. Uh, roll call on rejection, uh. Motion rejected.
Debbie Davis?
Why are we voting on?
To reject? This is, oh, you have to vote to reject.
This is confusing, can we not start this out of loafer? And voting for it or against it, instead of reject and dis-ject and?
Well, somebody make another motion after this, but since that motion's second, we go to vote on.
If you vote yes, you're voting not to take the truck, right?
Yes.
That's what about? If you vote yes, you're saying no.
Okay, so, no.
Do you have?
No.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Kipinger?
Pass.
Lieutenant Trenton?
Yes.
James Witty?
Yes.
Renowned, two yes, two pass. Anybody want to change?
Oh.
So we did not, not?
I'll change mine to no.
A pass is a no.
Westover, yeah.
No, it is a no.
I wanted to give the option to pass, because there's.
So that you don't say it's a no.
Now, sometimes you're in the middle of the fence, and you pass is correct word, even though it's a nodal steel, it puts you in a bad spot.
We'll start the schedule again. I'll save it if he made one.
Who made the motion?
Paver made the motion to do what?
Accepted.
Mark Saxon, any more discussion?
And if we vote yes on this one, we're voting to take it, right?
Any discussion on the second, we'll be. Roll call.
Greg Brooks?
Yes.
Debbie Davis?
Yes.
Do we have tonight?
Yes.
Mark Evans?
Yes.
John Kipinger?
Yes.
Lieutenant Trenton, go. James Witty?
No.
Five yes, two no. Two votes.
Next is, uh, Oakwood Fire Hall, I sort of addressed that in the budget minutes, I just going to update everybody on it. We got, uh, it's getting dryer, so we hope to get a, a male door put up in front, there was water standing there where it goes, and, uh, get, uh, two to three loads of gravel, we get parking lot fixed, and it's getting closer, it's been low, with that, it's getting, it's caused a COVID, three bids. Cause the bids are just good for thirty days, it's been a night, we're getting done, but we're getting closer, so, uh, I think we're within a, a month or two of putting a rescue vehicle in. So, long as the weather stays good, and I just got to just update everybody on it, and then we have the budget minutes, we cover the requisition. Uh, last one is, uh, school profits, Mr. Gordon Cheekass, the county owner thing.
That, uh, property, uh, has a, uh, resolution to make, uh, it says property, uh, in print. Bottom line, it needs to be so, we looked at the other day, it's got mild use throughout the entire place, so, it's got a couple of bricks of wood down there. Uh, the paneling is coming across in a part of the wall. I thought it's a mirror, but Mr. Woody turned, Mr. Reston office informed me that that wasn't a mirror, it was actually the paneling coming off. Uh, it's got heaters that are running inside, hot water heaters, electricity's still on, and a great fuse panel, if y'all have never seen one, two, three, four, middle. Whole house is wired with two fuse panels. Uh, it needs to be so, it needs to even be a minimal bid, and this is something y'all can't take in the past, that I can address in the resolution. It needs to even have a minimal bid, or sealed bids and go through the cycle where the bids come in.
We can have sealed bid and a minimal bid.
Well, the way, uh, our county attorney talked, you kind of do one or the, you can do a minimal, but when you start doing the ten percent attitude, come back every month.
Right, but if we don't do that, if we just do sealed bids, we can still have a minimal bid, be in the sealed bids.
Yeah, it got like it was easier to do it through the cycle, so, now, that's, you'll have to talk to Eric on that, but. What would be your honest record on that issue? Now, the original motion, which I have, uh, actually, I didn't look up, Mr. Rogers looked up on it, was that fifteen acres, this was in twenty seventeen, I believe it was. That, uh, there was a motion made by Buster Lewis, especially by, with Greg Brooks, to sell fifteen acres of the house. Uh, Eric, County Attorney, Eric Lewis, go to paperwork and make the sale. Apparently, nobody told Eric. And it didn't go so, but the money was to come back into the county funds that were used to purchase the property for the schools. Uh, it was to be recouped into the county, and that's what we advertised before we went to the vote, and that is that we bought a house and land. It was about fifty acres of the land, I think, with a house, fifteen acres of the service, and the house in mind. So, y'all have a idea of if you'd rather see it come with a resolution with a minimal bid? Or put it in the road, or do vote?
What about an option?
Well, options be minimal bid option, uh, I think a couple members from out there, uh, New Commissioner Brooks talked in building committee meeting, Mr. Escocks, some work point two, five, two. I talked to some others that said that, good luck with that, may not get to get it on that, dollars of damages.
Keep talking, it'll keep going down.
Sorry, anything else you want to throw off on, remember two local native papers? Kind of give them more evidence, give them a start over.
But all the damage, all the damage in the basement is concrete, it's concrete behind all of it. So, that's all superficial.
Yep.
All superficial, uh, the damage, the grain, right?
Exactly.
But what?
It wasn't. Exactly, so.
You'll get to one today, with the bill that you did five years ago.
It is going to be long.
Well, I looked at it a year ago, you know, upstairs, I mean, I was loving life by the shape that it was still. I mean, you know, I mean.
I'd like to put that like on the agenda for next month at least.
We got no resolution for the truck.
Well, I've got some questions.
Pointed out that it was bought with, uh, it was for county general use.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
Who's going to pay for repairs?
How do you? I have money in my grand, we're in the state of Tennessee.
So, if something major happens to it, you have enough to pay for it?
Uh, I have almost two thousand dollars.
So, if something major really happens, is it going to come out of county funding? And who pays the insurance on it?
Insurance, I'm sure will be covered under county general insurance.
Yeah, it'll be added to the fund.
Do you get additional maintenance money every year?
I do.
Okay, well, that can give you like two some maybe, like if something big happened.
This would be for gas and everything, right? Gas and?
No, no, that's not your gas, is it?
No ma'am, that's separate.
Yeah.
He just, his budget is forty-four thousand dollars a year, that he gets. That's part of that what he's talking about.
It's a total of forty-four thousand, but that, and that's paid.
His salary, that's everything.
Yeah. Well, here's why I'm gonna pray and look at. Dodge diesels, rarely power. The worst thing that normally happens to them and Mark can testify to this.
Are you a Dodge man, Mark?
I'm sorry, but anyway, the worst thing that usually happens to them, and especially the old ones like that, is the fuel, is the pump. Uh, so, and that's usually around a twenty-five hundred dollar repair.
And this one's already had its axles rebuilt, hasn't it?
Yeah. So, anyway, so, and if all was worked, which Mark said that, that somebody talked to him about, that did do the work on it. Uh, so, if all of that work has been done, if all that, you know, stated is correct, that, that is a plus.
But it'll come out of maintenance and repairs for us. We will have to pay for it.
If this is working beyond what, if this is.
It's like we did this tire for the repair.
And Mr. Rogers is good, was up in the limits of, it was for county funds, it's a full county general. Purchase for this nation should be a sanitation. That way, in canons, when the canyon only comes up, it should be able, the hires used to put the truck, it should be able to apply it with any canon. That's one place to come to. In other words, I use a can of oil. Use that as an in can.
Now, I want, this is not really going into the truck time, but while we're on this little deal. Now, you, the one that is running the program that you used to see the inmates? In the truck that said sheriff and they're riding in the back of it and all. Okay, is that program still in effect?
Yes.
Okay, so this is two separate programs.
Yes.
Okay, I, I just wanted to know that, no matter, I'm just asking.
You take out, what, two inmates?
He, he has two, two to four. Um, and that would be great, our, you know, roads are, are really bad and I can't do it out of my personal car. And because of COVID, they didn't let them out, and then they did, and they didn't let them out, so I think that's about to lift. And um, I, I cleaned up where we, with my groups, we picked up over thirty-one thousand pounds of, of hazardous waste just in my car. So I could double that easily in a truck. And I'm spending more gas miles, I've got sixty miles to get there, I'm going back and forth, you know, dozens of times. And you know, going back to the crushers and stuff, to dump some of the garbage after it raced through. And that's count, that's costing, you know, cause I'm paying my own gas. It's costing county, it's costing me a lot of money, so.
About it, it's county fund.
John, what, was there an amendment to go along with the purchase of this truck, or where?
I, I does check, as long as we're making clear in the minutes that this truck was from county general.
It doesn't.
Then, then, yeah, I mean. Question last time, we bought the truck out of county general at one point and then they, and they moved it into another department and the truck went with them. Didn't notice it was bought out of county general, so we have to make sure to put it in, see, this was county general.
Now, we got an announcement statement, so I got one announcement. I promised Jackie, cause I'm the worst one that I was, anybody else rise cheer if they've uh, got something to say. And be sure to stick around and do it. A lot of times we get tossed and walk off, and you have to catch us down a whole week. Sometimes like the next week.
Usually if somebody's in my office and they're studying, probably of the resolution.
I'm the world's worst, I don't like I stuck around saying nothing, even though I know we're talking to somebody or something.
I have some questions. I have something else about the two towns. Uh, now's the time to sell property. I don't see any house to sell in the two hundred thousands anymore. It's three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. We have a successor who sells real estate, so if you like him, and let him give us an appraisal approximately. Now's the time to sell because people are coming to the county, I think our property's cheap. And we need the money.
I'm with you.
Yes, you're, I mean, it's time to do it for fine crashes.
Yeah, and just like you get paid as they're all going up and they get paid as a hit. So.
Mr. Jerry, there was a pair, uh, you have corrected number on that budget.
It's ninety-six, it's, the budget amendment that said ninety-nine one, it's ninety-nine one hundred.
There, there was an apparent, it was made, a, a budget amendment that said ninety-nine one. That should've read ninety-nine one hundred.
I would want to thank Greg for your job.
And uh, Robbie, you asked me to remind everyone that we're taking applications still for that non-voting member for the Board of Equalization.
For what?
And what he announced last night, that Duck Town's the non-voting member for the Board of Equalization? Or the ID board's in, we're taking two separate, two separate boards.
And then uh, uh, back to the truck, on this cross, cross, non-rate and dotting all right. Uh, Mr. Wallace also works fire and rescue, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm, if you're in it, and you respond to a call, will you be getting back in your regular vehicle?
Yes, sir.
But I'm, what it is, I don't think our insurance would cover that truck run emergency traffic.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's gonna have yellow lights on it. And it's gonna have, you know, I already have a light bar for it and it's just yellow lights only, so, no, I would not be responding for that.
I just.
I would not be using that truck for that.
Insurance thing.
Yes, sir, yeah, no, I agree.
Property says with vehicle, you know, it would be, it just insured as a normal fifty-five mile an hour car. And I don't think our insurance would respond to.
It won't do emergency vehicle.
Yes, it won't cover it for emergency vehicle, like, and the vehicle would be out of something, you know, oh, you don't get hurt. Like, you know, something, I got run over, another car or anything, that'd be an enormous lawsuit that we could probably lose, so. I just make sure on that.
Yes, sir, uh, what I have to do to be able to run emergency traffic, I've been in the fire rescue for over twenty-five years. And uh, my chiefs and the uh, the board has to say to us, if you can.
Oh, sir.
Drive, you know, my car, my, my personal car in emergency traffic. And of course, they would never let that uh, fly or get in big trouble, so.
I just think it sure will get with thorough by there.
Yes, no, I totally understand.
Only thing on that, Bruce, we would have to approve it to be used for anything other than.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Uh, Greg, before you adjourn, can you get through, I got a question.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, this ain't got nothing to do with nothing, but while we got an extra minute or two. Uh, I don't know what, who, what, and what we need to do. Uh, to start finding out what the uh, situation is with the property that Judge Bellows has donated. Because he made the comment, which I guess he may have had every right to, that we are dilly-footing around? And not progressing.
He didn't give us the time.
Okay, well, he made that comment.
Was there not issue by the right wing?
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I wondered, what do we have to do? Because, well, two reasons why I was wondering, because he has made that comment. Then uh, and then the second thing is, the courthouse is in need of repair right now.
We've already got the money for that one.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be.
It just needs our RFP, just needs our specs on it because we've already looked at it. And he's trying to push us to sell this land. I actually told Robbie a lot of stuff because Robbie's hung to me about it. But we have the money to fix our courthouse, we just gotta get our RFPs on it so we can put it out there. We got the money for it. Without having to be pushed to sell this piece of land, that's land law, that we're not gonna get enough money for.
Well, so it, he doesn't, there is no, so there's no right of law.
Well, we don't know. What are you looking at, all the skin, you see?
I look at it, I don't think that there is a, you know.
There's not.
You have to ask. Because I mean, once again, this is the time to sell land, if you weren't gonna sell it.
Well, it's got power lines on there, you can't build on it.
Right.
So it's really no use to nobody.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, it's.
Right, okay, well, like I say, he was making the comment and it was kinda making us look like we're sitting here doing nothing. For something that he has done and I, you know, and I didn't know. I mean, I knew there's a right of way problem. But other than that, that's as far as I knew. And uh, you know, I kind of liked when somebody says, well, you know, you've got free land, why ain't you get something with it? Yeah, you know, so, anyway.
Wow, do you got a question?
Real quick, when did y'all say the fair was gonna be?
September thirteenth or thirtieth ninth, I think. What else is thirty?
Greg, Greg's gonna run the merry-go-round and I'll, I'll run pumpy round, so.
I'll be there.
Somebody can offer cotton candy, make your son, I don't know, we'll give it to him. Okay, okay.
It's possible, one of them people might call John Hunt back and say, hey, I worked driving with Lloyd, Lloyd said he still won't let us come back. I've got two.
And I called and one that I emailed. And I have, and, and they're all listed on the state assoc- association affairs site. I think it's listed, it's not fair association. Uh, other hurdles.
All right.
Man, it's one of them deals, you just know if you don't ask.
Don't know, don't know, couldn't come through.
Anybody else?
Uh, just to be clear on those boards I thought had been using, the Board of Equalization is taking applications and the ID board's taking applications. There's the non-voting member vote.
The ID board?
Yes, it's a non-voting.
What's it for, just a, a reserve lock or something?
I'm like a lobbyist.
Okay.
Yeah, they're just to get the top one and promote people.
That's it.
All right, I got most of the journey.
Yes, sir.
Waiting there. Sign my face.